Okay, I'd like to call the meeting in order with the pledge of allegiance, please.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening and welcome to the regular meeting, the regular April meeting of the Greek Castle School Board. First item on the agenda is adjustments to the agenda. Mr. Gibbity.
Yep, I don't have any adjustments for the agenda this month.
Okay, makes that easy. Next item is public comments regarding agenda items. Is there anyone that would like to comment on an agenda item tonight? Okay, there are none, moving on. Next item is recognitions, Mr. Gibbity.
Yep, Ms. Johnson?
Red Path would like to recognize our student from last month first, and this is Lenora Hazard. She is a first grader in Mrs. Crone's room, and she was nominated by Mrs. Roderick. And she states she is a joy to have in class. She is constantly asking what she can do to help, whether it is pass out papers, erase the board, or read with a friend. She always has a smile on her face and is ready for whatever comes her way. She always does the right thing. She is willing to help out any friend that might be struggling to figure out something. All of her peers enjoy her company. She's fun-loving, very smart, and has a very bright future ahead of her. So Lenora Hazard. You're not seeing double, Ross. So this is really exciting. We were talking about Students of the Month again late last, or early last week, and both of these girls' names came from both of their first grade teachers, and I said, let's do them together. This is so great. So this is Brooklyn and Britten Wells. And Mrs. Clark nominated Britten, and she states that Britten is a very kind, compassionate, and sweet student. She thinks of people first and is always quick to make sure someone knows instructions or has a friend to play with on the playground. As you can tell, our theme's been kindness. Mrs. Crone nominated Brooklyn. Mrs. Crone shares that Brooklyn works very hard every day. Even though Brooklyn has come across some challenges at school, she has found a way to push through, and this was my favorite part. Mrs. Crone said it has been a delight to watch Brooklyn have those lightbulb moments which every educator strives for and recognize that in herself. Both students are such a delight to have at Red Path. So Britten and Brooklyn Wells.
We have a backdrop set up for photos with our Students of the Month. Ms. Spencey?
All right, tonight we have Mayla Marlowe, and Mrs. Hill is her teacher. She nominated Mayla. And Mayla is a very sweet and caring little girl. She's a hard worker and an excellent role model for her class. Mayla loves helping others and takes the initiative to find others in need and always lends a helping hand. So she is our Student of the Month at Deer Meadow.
Now, if you can't tell, this is a model of a student. He is all dead down. He's purple already this morning, or this afternoon, this morning. Wow, it's been one of those days. So I would like to introduce Enrique Serna. Enrique is a fourth grader in Ms. Lewis's class at TZ. And she has written about Enrique. Enrique is a student that always comes into school with a positive attitude and a smile. He has been working very hard this year on his academics and striving to get better every day. Enrique is a friend to everyone, and you can count on him to always make a good decision. I second that. It's easy to say that Enrique makes our class better every day that he is in it. Congratulations and thank you.
Our Student of the Month for the middle school today is Sophia Endicott, and she's new to our school this year. She was coming back. And her teachers have said she's a very hard-working student, always tries her best. They love that she's always willing to participate and answer questions. She's very kind and friendly in the hallways, and they're impressed of how well she has adjusted to new school and worked so hard on her classwork. She is a delight to have in reach. She always enters a classroom with a positive disposition and adds so much to class discussion. Sophie's an incredible hard worker. She is excellent at communicating with her teachers, doing her work, being on task, and being kind to others. Sophie is true to herself and her values and shines in exemplary student daily.
So the Student of the Month for the high school is apparently not here. Mr. Hanky has nominated Jillian Cooper. Mr. Hanky said that Jillian was the model of character perseverance among all the other students. She stood out in her particular trait in math class. No matter how difficult the material got, no matter how challenging the homework was, Jillian always stood out by putting forth her best effort every single day. He also wanted to mention that only, not only did Jillian put forth an awesome level of effort every day, but she was also willing to do it with a cheerful attitude, never complaining or griping. He knows that Jillian will continue to be successful in whatever she puts her mind to in the future because of this deeply ingrained perseverance. And it is that reason that he was pleased to nominate her for the character trait perseverance.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, which consists of the meeting minutes from March fourteenth of special meeting and March twenty-eighth, the regular board meeting. Allowance of Claims, Financial Report, and Personal Reports, Part One and Two, which are posted on the website and the front door. Mrs. Roman.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Okay, in your finance packet, you're gonna see a couple of regular payrolls for the month of March. First one was dated March fourth, 2022, for a total payroll of $437,154.95. And along with that, as usual, we're gonna have some pre-pays for retirement and payroll taxes. Total for the March fourth payroll, $123,372.88. The second regular payroll was March eighteenth, 2022, for a total payroll of $450,297.03. And the payroll taxes and retirement, $128,479.55. And next in your packet, you're gonna see a list of pre-pays dated for the entire month of March, 2022. Did anyone have any questions about any of those pre-pays on there? No? Okay. Yep, nothing unusual here, except for the lab supplies that we order for the high school. That's the only thing that would be different than normal on here. The total is $485,925.77. And then next in your packet, you're gonna see the list of claims dated today, April twenty-fifth. And looking through here, did anyone have any questions about any claims for this month? No? Okay. Total claims dated today, April twenty-fifth, 2022, $353,457.30. If we're ready to move on to the fund report? Yep, okay. Balance at the end of March, 2022, an education fund, $2,487,663.05. Operations balance, $1,115,104.66. Total for all funds, if you go to the last page, number five, is $7,597,849.92. And then if you look at your depository statement, you'll see the ending bank balance for all banks, minus some outstanding checks for Bank Ten. Total fund balance for all funds, all banks, $7,597,849.92. And that is balanced with the fund report, which is where we wanna be. That's good news. And then lastly, in your packet, you're gonna see the bond expenditures for 2021. Balance forward from July, 2021, through March, 2022, was $3,264,1879. And then we had some expenditures out of bond 2021 for the month of April. The total for all expenditures for bond 2021 as of today, April twenty-fifth, is $3,379,675.51. Pending any questions, I'd like to submit for approval.
Yeah, just quickly, I know last month we approved transferring some money over to a different bank.
Yes.
Yeah, obviously that's not happened yet. What kind of timeframe are you looking at?
Sure, yeah. So when I go to close out April, you're gonna see some, you know, transactions on your depository statement on that. That transaction actually took place the beginning of April.
Oh, okay.
So when we go to close out April and we show you all that information at the May board meeting, you're gonna see that balance in that bank.
Well, it has.
Yeah, it has happened, yes, it has. So, but thank you for asking. It has happened, and you'll see that activity on the May board meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is reports. First from Assistant Superintendent Dr. French.
Yeah, so a couple of exciting things I wanted to share with you. So for the last eighteen months to two years, we've been doing a lot of professional development and work in teacher training around the science of reading, and I know I've talked about that a lot. But all that hard work is gonna pay off because by the end of this fall, every single one of our K-two teachers, our classroom teachers, will be licensed or certified, ideally, reading specialists. So because of all the work that they've done during our professional development, they'll reach the criteria, so they'll all be certified. And what's cool is, I don't know anyone else in the state that has that. And so because of that, later on this summer, GCSE will be highlighted by the IDEE and the Indiana Reading League with that. And while that's great for, you know, our teachers to have that certification and it's, you know, a great PR thing for our district, you know, the big thing is our kids are gonna benefit from that with all of their special skills in learning how to read, so I'm really excited about that. And then also tonight, we have some exciting things happening at TZ this fall, some changes coming, so I've asked Mrs. Rhodes to share those with you. So Mrs. Rhodes, whenever you're ready, and I know Cory has some.
They're talking, so I'll have all this. I'll give you one in a minute. I think Mr. Phil's gonna get me up there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay, so I just kinda made some slides here. We'll just kinda go through them relatively, and then you can keep this to take notes or ask anything you would like. So our next step's moving forward, so. So we put some, I gathered some data. Obviously, we have lots of data floating around. We just tried to make it something that would be easy to read. So we do NWA testing three times a year, fall, winter, spring. Our spring testing will take place here in a couple of weeks, but based on our testing that we did this winter, it was determined that about fifty-two percent of our third graders scored in the fiftieth percentile or higher. We look at kind of fiftieth percentile as an indicator of passing I read, or I'm sorry, I learn. I learn. Fourth grade, about forty-nine percent, and fifth grade, about fifty-six percent. Those numbers are a little bit higher than they were last year, so we're moving in the right track. Our goal, you see, we've got some work to do, eighty percent at each grade level is what we are gonna be working towards. The next slide. So last year, right, we are heavy into I learn right now. Our third graders tested last week, and our fourth and fifth graders are testing starting tomorrow. They're all very excited. So last year, you know, a year and a half, two years into pandemic and some of those gaps that we have had, we noted that our third grade, thirty-six percent passed ELA, forty-six percent passed math. In Indiana, the average for ELA third grade was thirty-eight point seven, and then forty-eight point seven for math. So we're just under the state average in third grade, but again, I think we're moving in the right direction. Fourth, fourth grade, thirty-three and thirty-five percent, and then those state averages are there. Fifth grade, forty-eight and forty-seven, and we are above the state average. So that's where I wanna kind of be a little cheerleader here because that is two years worth of, or three, four years worth of now, wonders and Eureka. So having good, strong curriculum and having something that everybody in the building is doing, you know, it doesn't happen overnight. It takes, it takes a while, and the primary kids have had those curriculums and it built up. And so I think here in fifth grade, we've started to see, see our results, and I'm confident that we're gonna see similar with third and fourth coming into the next year or so. So that's just a little bit there. I read. We have been consistent the last couple of years with about seventy-nine percent passing the spring test, the one that we did right before spring break. After, we did remediation, and we retested last summer, eighty-three percent passed. And we will retest again on June sixteenth after doing remediation the entire month of May, as well as summer school, June sixteenth, or sixth through seventeenth. Our goal is ninety percent passing. I think we are more than capable of that with some retests. So, and with the remediation plan we have in place, starting in May, I think we're gonna hit some really good things. So, okay, that's just kind of where we're at right now. So now, blasting into next year. This is gonna be our theme for next year, so getting ready, and we're gonna change some things into some space things and spruce things up a little bit from what we've been doing the last couple of years. So we've got a lot of things going on. First, Cory, we're going to be switching to a model part, departmentalizing in fourth and fifth grade. Third grade will remain consistent because departmentalizing is not recommended for third grade and below. And what that means for departmentalizing is our teachers are gonna be put on teams of two, and they are going to be given time to obviously help us increase achievement scores, but also letting the teachers grow in kind of an expertise in an area or two. Instead of having to learn all the curriculum pieces and focus on all of those things, we are gonna have, one teacher will be ELA in Social Studies, and the other teacher on their team will be Science. Project Lead the Way, those STEM things. So within each grade level, we will have three teams of two, okay? All of our fourth and fifth grade teachers will be delivering our SEL curriculum, which is Second Steps, just for those social and emotional learning things, just so that way we keep a very consistent language in the building with that, and every teacher is using the same terminology and those kinds of things. Okay? So that's a little bit about departmentalizing. As Dr. French has been talking about, we have been knee-deep in the science of reading. And science of reading, if you don't remember, is very scientifically based about reading and issues related to reading and writing. And there are two primary components, word recognition and language comprehension. I like to think of the analogy, it's a math analogy actually for reading, but that we've learned from our reading specialist, Jamie Peeler, who's been coming in and doing some PD, that if you think of each of those components as one, if you have word recognition, which is decoding and being able to sound out words, all of those things, if you have that, but you're not good at understanding language, either written or listening, verbal, then one times zero is zero, so you're not gonna be a good reading comprehender. Same is the other way. If you're a good listener, and you can take in information, but you can't decode, then again, it's one times zero, and you're still at zero. So both of those pieces have to be, be in place in order to have kids become good at reading comprehension. So we are currently providing staff almost weekly with some kind of a PD, whether it's at PLC or during our weekly collaborations, sometimes after-school things, coffee chats, webinars, those kinds of things, to get ready and start continuing this into next year. So our twenty-two, twenty-three school year is going to be heavy into these components. We actually have somebody coming next week that's gonna model a whole lesson for all of our reading teachers so that we can then kind of restructure our reading time away from the traditional nine-minute block into more of the science of reading program. And then we will also add writing, a writing component called Science of Writing. And we'll look at that starting, starting first semester and try to make some changes there. Coaching and modeling with Jamie Peeler, our leading specialist, as well as some changes we're gonna do with Kathy, Azvel, and myself, and our teachers will be doing, teachers' modeling and coaching lessons with each other, and as well as Kathy and I doing things, and then Mrs. Peeler coming in as well. So this is what is kind of being given to us by the DOE, and so Mrs. Peeler's also been sharing this with us. And it just kind of is, it's just a visual for how all these pieces fit together. So you've got language comprehension that is made up of background knowledge, vocabulary, language structure, verbal reasoning, and literacy knowledge. And then that word recognition piece with phonological awareness, decoding, and sight recognition. Those kind of weave together to make that rope that we get to be a skilled reader. So it's just kind of a nice visual, and the DOE is looking at that as well. We're a little ahead of the game. I think Dr. French has mentioned that. We've already been planning science of reading things, and I know when we got our I read scores back, the state sent a three- or four-page document on tips for remediating, and it all had to do with science of reading and looking at it that way, and we were just, yep, we're already on that, so we felt pretty good about that. Some other things, just kind of really quickly, we're going through and we're gonna be getting a lot of different resources and kind of revamping what we already have. First, we're gonna be looking at some new spelling and word recognition material. So prefix cards, suffix cards, a spelling program that's based around rules. So we won't be really asking kids to memorize lists of spelling words. We'll be helping them understand a rule and then asking them to apply it. Our wonders reading program, we've had that for at least another year, so we'll still be using that as our core reading program, but we'll be supporting that with some other material that's a little bit more content-rich. I'll talk about that here in just a minute. And then writing, again, we'll continue with what we're using right now, which is a Common Core writing resource that we've enjoyed using the last couple of years, but then as we learn more about the science of writing and what different ways we can be doing that, we'll transition to that. Science and Social Studies is where we're gonna see a real difference, and we are going to be looking at some resources with a site called Core Knowledge, and then Project Lead the Way, history science will be a supplemental. It's an online digital science, but we'll be looking at really building background knowledge and content knowledge in content-rich subjects for kids and those high-interest things. So that will be a very strong component, and we're going to be, the big piece here is that last couple lines. Currently, fourth and fifth grade, third grade does this as well and will continue, but fourth and fifth grade, they alternate between science and social studies every day, so we have a social sciences time. So they get about forty-five hours of science and about forty-five hours of social studies throughout the year. And they are going to be getting ninety hours of each, so that will be doubling because we're gonna have a built-in everyday science and social studies time. And then, I don't wanna leave math out. We use Eureka. Eureka has come up with a new program called Eureka Squared, but I kinda like Eureka two-point-oh better, so I just call it that. They have given us pacing guides, some built-in assessment days, which is gonna be really nice because they give us about a hundred and eighty days' worth of lessons, and then you're supposed to assess as well, and there's just not time. So you have to pick and choose. So some of those days are built in. There's a digital component that we're gonna be having access to that will give us some benchmark testing and assessment as well as providing teachers with the material that they need to remediate and use in the RTI process with math. And then lastly, we're gonna have a building-wide math-backed fluency program. Not exactly sure what that's gonna one-hundred percent look like. I've got a couple of ideas, but I don't know about you, but I even remember you just learned math facts. I was just a given. You knew it. And we still have fifth graders counting off ears, and I see that in print, so we're gonna backtrack a little bit. And it's not gonna be a digital game. It's probably gonna be a paper pencil timed kind of thing, but we're gonna make it a building-wide initiative to get everybody to learn their math facts. So next year, it's gonna be a big year. Obviously, change brings about a little bit of nervousness, lots of questions. So we are going to be very intentional with our PLC and our collaboration times, looking at lots of data, looking at curriculum instruction, providing times for teachers to have lessons modeled and see how things should be. And then we'll also start some discussions on grading practices as well. That's what's going on at TZ. It's a lot. It's a lot.
Just don't give us a math fact test.
Well, I love those. Let's do that. We do still have, so we have some teachers that do them. Kids, some kids really like it. And so we have some classrooms that are still doing math fact timed tests. And anytime if I walk in at the wrong time, Mrs. Rhodes, do this with us. And so I sit down, and I have been beat by a couple of kids, so they love that. Sometimes I let them in, but sometimes I don't.
I was gonna ask, so I know this is like with the whole curriculum and everything, but just curious about reading in general. but just curious about reading in general. So I know, so like when I was, you know, a little kid, I just loved reading. And so I just wonder about programs or anything to kind of spark, you know, and I think some, some kids are going to want to read like crazy and some aren't, but anything to kind of, kind of spark just that, just reading on their own outside of classroom.
Yeah, so we encourage parents, if kids are having trouble and they just don't seem to have an interest, to let kids read anything. Read a comic book, read a newspaper, read the, you know, the sports edition. We have, if you haven't been into T Z or Deer Meadow or eureka, we all have the book vending machines right now, and the kids love that. And that has sparked some interest in some kids being able to come get a book. But there's lots of, we use Epic also, which is an online book service, and kids read books online, so it's kind of like a book or Kindle, but it's on their tablet. But we just really encourage parents to have kids reading anything, and even if reading to them. You know, I know at T Z we do a lot of, you know, kids should read every night for twenty minutes, but that doesn't necessarily mean the child has to read. Parents can read to them, and that sometimes will spark some interest. This Core Knowledge program, that resource will be very beneficial, because I think it hits on a lot of high-interest things. There's a lot of things on, you know, American Revolution, American history, science kinds of things that is nonfiction topics that kids will get into.
Sounds a little bit like the teachers are going to be able to specialize to an extent into like a couple of fields.
Yeah, especially fourth and fifth grade. They will be either E L A in Social Studies or they will be Science and Math. So that's going to take, take some things off of them, but let them really be able to dive into some of these new things.
It's easier to be an expert at one or two things than it is at five or six steps.
Yeah, sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
It, it sounds like that K through two reading program with everybody being certified is going to lend right into reading scores going up.
That's the goal, and then we also have some summer P D set up with our middle school English teachers, too, to kind of extend that up.
Next is Superintendent report.
Yes, just a couple of updates this month. Obviously, we're still working to finalize our numbers from kindergarten roundup that took place earlier this month, and we'll continue to track down, the buildings will continue to track down kids between now and the start of school, so, so we can really kind of begin planning for what those classes or what those numbers look like. So when I get those, I'll share those with you. Exciting work taking place on the building project. Obviously, we see a lot of visible change now. I think just either today or yesterday, a second construction trailer's dropped off. Definitely appreciate everyone's patience and cooperation, especially our parents and our high school student drivers, as we change operations and procedures. Relatively soon here, within the next week or two, we'll lose our main entrance to the high school, and so they'll punch through the temporary main entrance, which goes right through the guidance, guidance department, and that'll serve as the main entrance until the the main work in the front of the building is conducted. A lot of the teachers in the first part of the building have moved out of their, out of their classrooms, same thing with the media center, and then at the end of the year here, we'll lose some areas at the back of the building. So our teachers and building administrators have been doing a good job, working together, communicating, we're still kind of working through what some of those unintended consequences or challenges might be, but just, and again, continue to communicate with our, with our parents as we, as we tackle this journey together. But nonetheless, exciting times for our, for our school and community. And then obviously, last Monday, we approved our award of the contract for the secure entrance and building envelope project at T Z to deal with some of the moisture and humidity issues and just overall heating and cooling the outdoors. So that work will take place either this summer and into next year. It's, we're on track, we think, as long as there is not a supply issue, to have the secure entrances in each of those buildings complete by the start of school. Still working with the middle school focus groups to develop out plans for the updated science classrooms, media center space, and secure office entries. We put again, that's, that's exciting as well. So continue to move right along, right along with that. And I shared with the board, and you'll see here highlighted at the end of the month, but we're very proud of Ms. Amy Berry, who is recognized as a W T H I Gold Apple Award winner. And so it's our understanding that W T H I will be highlighting award winners, I believe, the last week in April, is that correct?
Okay.
So, but that's a, that's a huge honor, and I couldn't think of a more deserving individual for that.
She actually will be featured on Friday, she gave you an update.
Even better.
So, and she'll be in tomorrow's paper, so.
Great.
So we're really excited about that, and thank you for writing that article, Jared. And then we celebrate the wonderful staff that we have at G C S E next week with a week filled of activities, celebrations, and raffles, because here we choose to celebrate everyone during the same week rather than during the individual week, or individual days throughout the year. So a lot of good things taking place, and obviously moving towards the end of the year.
Yes, indeed. Okay, great. Okay, next item on the agenda is old business, and we have no old business, which brings us to new business. And the first item under new business is an approval request for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three School Psychologist Intern.
Yeah, so special thanks to Mrs. Sullivan for arranging this. Our current school psychologist is working towards retirement and kind of easing, slowly transitioning to retirement, and she was able to line up an intern from Indiana State to help assist Dr. Ayette with some of the duties. And so we have a proposal in here that we're seeking approval for, and there's no cost to the district. She'll be supervised by Dr. Ayette, and hopefully it'll be a good experience for her, and at the same time, assist us.
Sounds good to me. More help the better, so I'll make a move into accept.
Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next item is an approval request for permission to hire summer bus cleaners.
Yep, so Mr. Clearwater is wishing to basically kind of take care of the annual duty and just line up some extra help to help clean our buses that take, that get plenty of use throughout the year and are in some dire need of cleaning. So I would recommend that the board approve of this request.
So move.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next item is an approval request for, to declare items of surplus.
Yep, so as is customary, we have a few things that have since been replaced that if possible, we'd like to be able to sell to recoup some funds or at minimum donate them as, as a means of disposing them. And so in your packet, we have some old high-jump pole vault pits, which I believe Mr. Greenlee has lined up a seller for those. And then in cleaning and preparing for the building project in Mackinac, we have some old swimming lane dividers, some extra diving boards, and a extra timing system for the scoreboard. Those are all items we don't, we don't need, and we'd like to be able to sell them or donate them. And so this completes a step that we need to take care of. So it'd be my recommendation to the board to declare those items of surplus.
Now make a motion. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is an approval, an approval request to accept some donations, several of them. First one being from Putnam County Community Foundation to the Greencastle High School Deca in the amount of two thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars. Second is Putnam County Community Foundation to Greencastle High School Baseball in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. Third is F M Reed Scholastics to Greencastle High School, the amount of sixteen hundred dollars. Next would be the Jack and Shirley Dalton Trust to a student at Greencastle High School to be named later in the amount of two thousand dollars. Mary Allison Children's Trust to Greencastle High School in the amount of five hundred dollars, and the Mary Allison Children's Trust to the Zonicus Intermediate in the amount of two thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and two cents.
Very specific number.
It is. So can I get a motion to approve these donations?
I will make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any questions for?
Quick math says that's over eleven thousand dollars of donations we just got, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's vote on it quickly for some chances. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Last item on the new business is the first reading of the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three building end.
Yep, so again, another customary end-of-year activity, no action being taken this month, just a first reading and to catch any technical corrections, and we'll bring those for approval next month.
It's already bedtime.
It is. Okay, great. Next item is other business. Does anyone have any other business?
No, I just, I just have a, have a question. I know I ask this all the time, like, how's the, how's the dog, how's the dog doing?
She is, you can tell from the comeback from the break that she's like about twenty-four hours through. She's doing really well. She participates in all the lessons in the classroom, and then we have quite a few kiddos that just, some trauma, some crises, just become kind of broke up or out of it, so she's period. She's got a hundred and eleven hours.
All right, okay, all right, that's awesome.
I had to stop and see her today.
You keep your secrets, keep it.
Okay. That's great.
I briefly asked about this the other day, and I probably don't have an answer, but when the legislature said it was only three e-learning days allowed unless there's special circumstances, are we going to have to relook at our schedule or how are we?
Yeah, we're wait and see, because even in the, we were supposed to get guidance from the D O E in their weekly memo last Friday, but they even, they put a little one-liner in there that they're not quite ready to give us any guidance. So it's wait and see. Yeah, so to be continued.
One of our students, Mr. Hurtenstein, I believe is the name, he had his name up on Times Square, that's pretty cool for doing the finance stuff for the younger kids, so.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of the Times Square thing, but I know Fox, Fox fifty-nine came in and they did a nice piece, a nice story.
Yeah, he ended up going to New York, he's pointing up, and if you look at the very, very top boy, and you can see his picture up there, it's pretty cool.
That's cool.
Congratulations to him.
We need the Times Square picture, I'd like to see that. That's pretty cool.
Anybody else? Okay, next item on the agenda is adjournment. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion? I'll second.
Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you all for coming this evening.